When it's time.
We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome, Akrine Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Akerson. Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Montalongo. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Wiganback. Councilmember Ruckregel. And Councilmember Turner. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We have several proclamations this evening. We'll start with Poppy Days first. We'll meet the folks up here at the center podium. Whereas America, the land of freedom, is preserved and protected by citizen soldiers who bravely sacrifice their lives for our country. And whereas poppy days are a time to honor those who have fallen while serving our great nation. The tradition of wearing the bright red poppy flower began in 1921 when it was first identified by the American Legion as the memorial flower. And whereas the poppy flower is worn as a symbol to honor the dead while also representing a sign of hope and renewal for the living. All the poppy flowers that are distributed among communities are assembled with pride by America's righteous disabled veterans. And whereas poppy flowers will be distributed throughout Peoria on May 10th through the 12th, when the American Legion and the American Legion Auxiliary unite in their efforts to keep the memory alive of those who perished while serving, in addition to honoring those who served. Now therefore I, Jamar Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby proclaim May the 10th through the 12th, 2018, as poppy days in Peoria and encourage all citizens to wear the memorial poppy flower on these days as a tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom. We have a couple of our distinguished representatives from the American Legion Peoria Post Number Two with a little bit more info. Sir?
I want to thank you for putting this with this proclamation. All the money we raise goes back to homes for the veterans' projects to buy art stuff so they can help with their hand movement and stuff like this. So it's for Veterans Home and the Gist of the Yanks. The Gist of the Yanks is for the local veterans on Christmas and stuff. We take packages out to them, clothes and stuff like packages, and then toiletry stuff out to them and present it to them. There's 14 homes in the area that we go to and stuff, so this money is really appreciated by them. Thank you. And I'm sorry I forgot to bring the poppies with me tonight. I usually bring them and hand them out, but I'll have to get them next, double up next time, I guess, because one of those things, too much going on. Thank you.
Next, we have the 30th anniversary of the Spirit of Peoria. Councilman Euler is going to join me for this one. I need to recognize a special guest in the audience tonight also. Our former mayor Bud Greaves is here tonight with his wife Alice, and we're very glad to have you here as well. Whereas many cities have a river view, Peoria has the opportunity to show off the river from the vantage point of the Spirit of Peoria paddle wheeler. And whereas this year marks the 30th year anniversary of the Spirit of Peoria, having launched from the Walker Boatyard in Paducah, Kentucky in 1988. And whereas the Spirit of Peoria has been operated by G&amp;G Packet Company for 25 years by Captain Alex Greaves and co-captained by Alice Grady and Dylan Masonholder. And whereas she's 160 feet long, 45 feet tall, and 35 feet wide, and is considered a true paddle wheeler with no props or thrusters. She's powered by two Caterpillar 3412 diesel gen sets. And whereas the Spirit of Peoria travels about 4,500 miles a year at 7 miles an hour and draws customers from around the world for entertainment and tours. And whereas she's landed in nine different states, having traveled on the Mississippi River, the Illinois River, and the Ohio River. Now therefore I, Jamar Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize the 30th anniversary of the Spirit of Peoria in Peoria, Illinois. We have Captain Greaves and his team here, but Councilmember Euler would like to say a few words first.
I just have to comment, I was only three years old when the Spirit of Peoria came to town. And I've actually got a picture hanging at home with my grandparents who first took me on the Spirit of Peoria, and that became one of our ongoing traditions for years growing up as a kid. So I was pretty excited to be able to attend the great dinner they put on last weekend and to be able to help with this proclamation. So thank you.
Well, thanks, Zach. Again, I'd like to thank my co-captains Dylan and Alice. They do a wonderful job aboard the Spirit of Peoria. I couldn't do it without them. I also want to thank my dad who's here, who helped obviously keep the boat in Peoria at the time. It was on its way to Kentucky. It was going to be the sister boat to the Belle of Louisville over there. And we worked with the city with an option to, with a lease, with an option to buy. And glad we did that. It's been 25 years, 25 years operating the boat. Of course, our, you know, 30-year anniversary here, and we hope to go another 30 years. And we appreciate all the support we're getting from Peoria and all the surrounding communities. Thank you.
We have Keller Williams Red Day. Is there anybody from KW here tonight? Maybe we'll do that next week. Then we have National Public Works Week. Our Public Works Director Scott Reese is here. Everybody else must be out working it. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Peoria. And whereas Public Works employees are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's systems, such as stormwater, sewers, urban forestry, streets and alleyways, fleet maintenance, public buildings, and other structures and facilities that are essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Peoria to gain knowledge of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective neighborhoods. And whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated annual National Public Work Week since 1960, now therefore I, Jamar Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby proclaim the week of May the 21st through 27th, 2018, as National Public Works Week in Peoria, Illinois. Most of us know our Public Works Director Scott Reese, who has a lot on his plate. We go right from winter and snow to spring and summer with a lot of road work and a lot of projects out there, but he does a great job and his team does a great job for us. And it is important for us to recognize the work that they do. So Director Reese is going to give us a little more information about some of the events coming up during Public Works Week.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just say what a pleasure it is to work at Public Works and with all the team we have there. And everybody there takes an extreme amount of pride in what they provide for the community. And we'd invite everybody out to Public Works, May 24th, Thursday, from 4:00 to 7:00. We're going to have an open house. Kids are invited, families are invited. That gives everybody an opportunity to get on the tractors, get on the trucks, and see what the guys and the whole team does every week.
Councilmember Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the April 24, 2018 Joint City Council and Town Board meeting as printed.
Thank you, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilman Seer. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We're at the Consent Agenda. 18-119 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to approve the selection of street material vendors for 2018. 18-120 is a request to approve a sole source purchase of a GPS-based emergency vehicle traffic signal preemption system for nine intersections for fire apparatus analytics software to determine what intersections can benefit from preemption in the amount of $92,338 from Traffic Control Corporation. 18-121 is a request to approve the purchase of replacement police vehicles through the State of Illinois contract bid process in the total amount of $207,918. 18-122 is a request to approve and authorize the execution of a contract with Resource Management Associates in the amount of $49,830 to administer the fire captain promotional examination. 18-123 is a request to approve a contract with Cottingham and Butler for healthcare consulting services with the city and the Joint Labor Management Healthcare Committee with the initial contract effective 5/9/2018 through 12/31/2020 at a cost of $85,000 per year to include actuarial and governmental accounting standards board services. 18-124 is a communication from the City Manager and Manager of Emergency Communications with a request for the following. A is to approve a five-year dispatch services agreement between the City of Peoria and the Village of Peoria Heights. And B is to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2018-2019 biennial budget relating to the general fund to recognize the receipt of funds and the corresponding expenditure of funds relating to the intergovernmental agreement with Peoria Heights to provide dispatch services in the amount of $110,425. 18-125 is a request to approve a resolution adopting language in the FAST Act to maximize the use of recycled asphalt shingles. 18-126 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request for the following. A is to accept the low bid from JIMAX Corporation in the amount of $18,777 for the 2040 North Knoxville demolition project. And B is to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2018-2019 biennial budget relating to the use of the East Village Growth Solitif Fund balance for the demolition of that same project in the amount of $18,778. 18-127 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Schedule N of Chapter 28 of the Code of the City of Peoria by designating the alley from West of the City of Peoria by designating the alley from West St. James Street to North Orange Street, a one-way alley with traffic flowing from West St. James Street to North Orange Street, South and West. 18-113 is a request to concur with the Planning and Zoning Commission to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code of the City of Peoria, relating to various text amendments. 18-128, which also has a handout on your desk of the Liquor Commission minutes that pertain to this item, and this is a request to approve the site application for a Class GB Beer and Wine Only Restaurant liquor license with onsite consumption of alcohol at Cracked Pepper Catering and Bakery Incorporated 1108 West Glen with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any items to remove from consent this evening? Seeing none, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilmember Euler and seconded by Councilmember Grab. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We're at regular business. 18-129 is a request from the City Manager, Fire Chief, and Manager of Emergency Communications for the following. Approve the, or enter into a sole-source contract with Fitch and Associates to perform dispatch and fire EMS operational assessment in an amount not to exceed $50,995, and to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2018-2019 biennial budget relating to the general fund recognizing the receipt of $25,498 from OSF Hospital and Unity Point Methodist and the corresponding expenditure increase of $25,498. And if we could have separate motions and votes on those, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, did you want to make a comment before we get a motion on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would. If you recall, we had a significant amount of discussion during the budget process last fall pertaining to, are we sending the right resources and the appropriate resources on EMS calls and on just general calls that are dispatched out of the Emergency Communications Center? Part of that discussion pertains to the larger system as a whole, the system that ties in with the Project Medical Director, that ties in with AMT, that ties in with the hospitals. So, following the budget discussion, had the opportunity to talk with both the Project Medical Director and the CEO of AMT. We talked with Fitch, who had done some work analyzing dispatch center operations in other locations, and they provided us a proposal to analyze our dispatch operations. And really, as the council communication outlines, focus on two key questions. One, are the right resources going to the right calls? And are those resources that are being sent appropriate? So, what the scope of work would be, that they would come in, they would look at our dispatch center protocols, they would look at our cards, how we're set up to dispatch our resources to those medical calls and other calls that we have. They'll analyze that, and they'll look at that against kind of best practices and provide us with recommendations if they think that we need to be making any changes there. They'll also look at the AMT system, how AMT is operating within that construct as well. The hospitals have agreed to provide half of the funding, so they've agreed to put up 50% of the total cost, 25% from Unity Point, 25% from OSF. So, the cost impact to the city would be about $25,498. We do have funds available to pay for that and to pay for that portion of the study. So, we would recommend that we go forward with this. It should take about five months to get the study completed. They'll have about four site visits where they'll come out and meet with our staff, meet with the rank and file. They'll meet with AMT, they'll meet with the Project Medical Director, and the Emergency Communications Center Director, the telecommunicators, and the dispatchers as well.
Maybe for the listening audience, just a little piece about how this will dovetail with the standard of cover analysis that the Fire Department's doing.
Sure. So, the Fire Department has been working through their accreditation process on a resource allocation plan. And this proposal was actually discounted because of the work that has been done there. I've received a draft of the resource allocation analysis from the Fire Chief. We haven't had a chance to kind of sit down and dig into it. I've gone through with all my notes, so we'll be talking about that soon, Chief. But, so this will tie in directly with that. Hopefully, what we'll be able to see is that while the resource allocation plan kind of looks at our current state, this study will look at any recommendations coming out in a future state as well, and what we might want to look at from there.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the manager, the chief, and/or a motion? Councilmember Reganbach moves for the approval, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Discussion, Councilman Grab.
Manager, if we have a call that involves perhaps a life-threatening situation, will the Fire Department be dispatched?
Absolutely.
And the AMT service will also be sent as well?
That's correct.
And the purpose of this ultimately is to reduce which superfluous act? What are we trying to make more efficient? Because reading the memo, I'm not quite sure that I'm seeing everything here.
So, part of it is, depending on the nature of the call, the Project Medical Director in consultation with the dispatch director and in consultation with the Fire Department and AMT, they've kind of agreed on how many resources they're going to send to the call based on the nature of the call. And really, everything starts at the dispatch center. There's a series of questions that the dispatchers will ask to try and figure out with that call that comes in, the types of resources that they have to send. So, what we're really going to do with this study is to look at it and see if we're dispatching our resources to the best practices that are out there in the profession. We may find that we come back and we are. It's simply that this is going to give us that check, that we can look at it and say that we're doing this to what the industry says that we should be doing in terms of dispatching the resources for those calls. You know, another example, and this just goes, we talked about this during the budget process. There are some calls that we go on where there are not any injuries on that call, but we still go out if there's a false alarm that we're hearing, and we send out resources to that. Well, is there another way that we can be looking at sending out resources where there may not be necessarily a need to send, you know, a fire truck with lights and sirens to go and address that issue? So, those are the kind of things that we're going to have to look at.
Can you give me some examples of when the fire truck should not be going and it currently is, and that it would appear to be wasteful?
Well, I think that as we looked at it during the budget process last year, we started to analyze the call volume based upon the nature of the calls. And there were a significant number of false alarm calls that we're heading out to, that we were going out to and addressing. There were also calls where there may have been an auto accident, but there were no injuries at that, and we're sending out resources to those. That may be an issue where the Police Department can say, you know what, we don't need to have the resources coming out because they're on the scene addressing the auto accident at that point in time. So, it's looking at those types of calls, when they're going out, and trying to ascertain whether or not we can change the way that we're currently deploying the resources in order to save money. It's really looking internally at the operations. And I anticipate that the professionals are going to do that work in consultation with the consultants that are here.
Now, I appreciate your response. Let me give you an example, because what I think we're asking are dispatch people to almost exercise divine qualities of intelligence. Example, someone calls up and says there's an accident at, I won't mention any streets, but a certain intersection. The Fire Department goes. Maybe that caller is not going to say there's gasoline that's leaking all over the pavement. Maybe then it's efficacious to have the Fire Department, well, it doesn't look like there are any injuries. The first perception of any accident may not be the accurate one, and I just am a little concerned that this may result in underreacting to potentially life-threatening public safety issues that are extant out there. And that's why I am quizzing you as to exactly what kind of call you're thinking you can...
Well, you know, obviously, the, and I will say this, I think that we have an amazing set of dispatchers that work at trying to ascertain from the caller that's calling in what we need to do in order to be able to dispatch the resources. And they're trained on how to use the cards that they have in order to ask the questions that they need to determine the types of resources that need to get sent out. But there's also another, you know, the police are there as well. And if there's, if they, in your example of an auto accident where maybe there's gasoline that they didn't see initially, you know, if the police officer catches that, there's an opportunity there for that person to make the call. The officer can make the call and say, we need to have additional resources coming out. That's why we have our interoperable communication system, so that they can continue to talk even during an incident that's going on.
Maybe this is helping me. It's possible that the Fire Department will be there before the police, depending on what's happening on the ground in Peoria.
It certainly can. It certainly can.
And so, I can imagine a scenario where you have an auto accident, you have gasoline all over the place, somebody thinks there's no injuries, but there are injuries, the Police Department's tied up, and we're not sending the Fire Department. That's my concern, that this may appear to be an efficiency move, but in reality, it may be very risky business. Also, it's not so much that I don't think that our dispatchers are highly trained and competent, but our callers aren't always, they don't always have the act together, especially if they're involved in an accident or an emergency, or if they're viewing it, viewing it only in a fragmentary way, going past, who knows? I'm just uneasy about this.
The intent behind the study is not to jeopardize public safety, one iota. The attempt here is to simply look at our protocols and making sure that we're looking at that in light of what are the industry best practices and making sure that we're responding appropriately. As we all know, we don't have unlimited resources, so we need to make sure that we're using our resources to the best of our ability, and that includes public safety resources. But there's no intent to jeopardize the public in any way with this.
Well, there never is an intent that is stated, and most responsible people wouldn't make a recommendation that would jeopardize public safety, because the first responsibility of this body is to ensure that there's public safety for the people of Peoria. That's the number-one budget priority for me, anyway, and has been, I think, for most council members who have run. But you know, we have disagreements, hence my discussion on this item, as to how responsible it is to suggest that we decommission a fire engine. And we had many weeks of gnashing and gnarling and debate and everything else about that. And yet, that was a recommendation. And some people can say, well, that wasn't the intent. But as they say, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. So, I really would say that it's okay to study this, but I don't know if the end result is going to be something that I'm going to buy into if it means, well, let's just not overdo it, and we end up people having worse injuries or possibly death because we didn't dispatch the Fire Department. That's my concern. So, you know, until I get more information about it that'll convince me, I'm going to vote no to amend the budget to do this.
Councilmember Reganbach was next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, just as a follow-up, you said that the Fire Chief, the Project Medical Director, Dispatch Director, and AMT, as well as Rank and File, will be involved with this. When you say Rank and File, does that include our firefighters on the street as well as the ambulance, who were not city employees, but what...
The intent of the study is that we get stakeholder input. I would view them both as having a stake in this as well, and they would be considered a stakeholder, so they would have the opportunity to provide input into the study.
I think Councilman Grab brings up a lot of good points about the public safety, and I think if there was anything that came out of our budget discussion last fall, it was that that is a priority for all of us. I also would say I support this wholeheartedly, because I'm not in that profession, and I want to make sure that we are utilizing the best practices. So, I don't want anyone to be alarmed that we're changing any protocols right now. What we're doing is doing a study to make sure that we are providing the highest quality and the most expedient response time, and using those valuable dollars in the most efficient manner. So, I will definitely support the resolution before us, and we'll look forward to hearing what all of the stakeholders' recommendation is coming forward.
I have Councilman Jensen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I do support this effort. I think it's wise, based on some of the issues that arose during our budget discussions and analysis over the last year. I do have a question about, I'm assuming, once Fitch completes the analysis, they'll provide all of us with a report, and that'll be made public?
Yes.
And it'll be distributed to all the parties?
Yes.
So, it's going to be in an open and transparent manner, right?
Yes. I'd be happy to have them come back and present their findings to us here at a council meeting. We'll make sure that we put this study on the website. There's no intention for this to just simply go through that exercise and then not utilize any recommendations that come out.
Thank you.
I have Councilmember Montalongo next.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm more for, let's save the money from paying another consultant to come out and study this. I think we have enough very experienced professionals in all areas, and if we can't get together ourselves and figure this out, I'm not too sure how a consultant's going to be able to come in and tell us what we need to do. So, I'll be voting no for this.
Is there any further discussion on this? Councilman Grab.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Montalongo. And to your points, Councilman Reganbach, sometimes I think I know where you're going, going this way, and then all of a sudden, it's over here. Did I hear you, I'm sure you feel that way about me most every night, because it's probably true, but are you suggesting to the manager that he involve a dialogue and discussion with firefighters, Local 50, the people who are on the ground and who know about these incidents, that they should be a stakeholder involved in this discussion and assessment? Is that what you were saying?
Councilman Reganbach.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying. The Rank and File, the boots on the street need to have input in this.
Absolutely.
Have they had any input in the expenditure of this sum of money as to whether or not they think it's an efficient way of doing it? Or might they subscribe to the philosophy just articulated by Councilman Montalongo, that the adults who work for the city can figure this out without having to hire a consultant?
Mr. Manager?
Well, we, professionals. Right, and your professional manager recommends this based upon the fact that we put the budget together and spending plan for you, and we feel that this is an appropriate use of those dollars. I think that this is the approach that we should take. I did not consult Local 50 on whether or not we should do this study, but they will certainly be consulted as we get into this, just as we'll ask the dispatchers and the AMT Rank and File to be involved in this as well, and the public, quite frankly. I'm perfectly happy, you know, expanding that out to be able to have some input from others as well.
Okay. I'd like to call the question here in a second, but I would like to thank the manager for the work you did to gain the support of both OSF and Unity Point to share the costs in getting the study done, which cut our costs in half. And I look forward to the results being discussed at a council meeting. We've never done a study that hasn't been open, transparent, and available when it was finished, have we? hasn't been open, transparent, and available when it was finished, have we?
I don't know.
Just checking. Any final questions? Councilman Grab?
Point of order to amend the budget. It's going to require a supermajority, and you're going to be asked to amend a biennial budget.
We are. That'll be on Item B. We're voting on Item A right now.
Right.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots on Item A. That motion passes with eight ayes, two nays, Councilmembers Grab and Montalongo. And on Item B, we have a motion, Councilwoman Euler, seconded by Councilwoman Akison. This is a budget amendment. We need two-thirds, two-thirds of 10 is seven. There's no discussion. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes with eight ayes, two nays, Councilmembers Grab and Montalongo. Madam Clerk.
18-130 also has a handout, and it's on yellow, and this, these are changes to pages one and two, but the request is to receive and file a presentation by the Peoria Public Works Department for the Stormwater Utility Credit Manual, and these changes are pages one and two of the credit manual.
Director Reese.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, we brought the draft version of the credit and incentive manual to council for you guys to review, and since that time, we've had a couple of public meetings where we reached out and discussed with the public what was in the manual, and talked through, and got some feedback. We received feedback up until today, actually, on it, so I don't have everything, all the proposed changes in here, but I wanted to walk through what staff is recommending and changing from the original proposal that we had, and then we'll bring a final version back at a later date at the next council meeting that we can totally cost out for everybody. But initially, what we're looking at, and that's what the yellow sheet has, is the highlights of what we changed. We had comments that, to extend the time, that people could show that they had provided maintenance, or provide proof of maintenance of their green infrastructure. And originally, we had that at 30 days, and we doubled that to 60, in case there was any delay or to deal with anything there. The other item is currently, our city ordinance requires you to get a erosion control permit if you disturb more than 5,000 square feet. So we matched this up with our current ordinances that are on the books and required that as part of this. And then we moved into the grant funding and selection process, and basically, we have the private property drainage assistance fund, which we have currently, is a first-come, first-served basis. We kept that as a first-come, first-served basis because it's really a participation, people have to front money for that, and then it's a reimbursement to the property owners. So we didn't want to slow that down at all. But then we have grant funds anticipated in this, in the stormwater utility, available to cover any gaps in construction. So if somebody is planning on building an asphalt parking lot, and instead they want to move it to a permeable parking lot, there's a funding gap there. Usually, there's about a 30% upcharge to go to permeable surfaces, so this would cover some of that cost. And then there's also some opportunity for innovation there. If somebody comes to us and has some new technique for stormwater infiltration or something, that they would have a funding mechanism to explore that. As we move through, I'd say one of the biggest changes is application fees. We reduced pretty much all of those significantly, some of them as much as in half or a third. The biggest thing is the stormwater infrastructure investment grant fees. That was originally $1,500, and we dropped that down to a $500 application fee. Those are anticipated, just so you know, as much as a $100,000 grant to cover those. And we actually took that cap off the grant, but they're, we're working through having a set defined amount of grant funds available each year that are there, and then rate those on priority-based. Then going through, let's see, we have the rain barrels, just changing it, that basically people have to agree to have their rain barrel for four years if we participate in that, and that they will empty them prior to winter freezing, so that the rain barrel stays in good condition. As I mentioned earlier, the infrastructure grants, the green infrastructure grants, we had a cap originally of $100,000 on that. We took that cap off from feedback on large parking lots and other large commercial properties, that there could be significantly higher costs than just $100,000 for that year, so we wanted to be able to open that up. And if it's, if there's a lot of benefit to the city in that, then we wanted to be able to participate in that. Over to the other side, on the private property, in Section 6.3, the private property drainage assistance grant that we have currently, a lot of properties in District 5 aren't eligible for that if they were platted after 2006 currently, the way the city is current, our ordinance is currently written. This takes that restriction off, so they're available if they've been constructed for, or these funds are available to them, if the house has been constructed 10 years or more. We didn't want it to be, we didn't want the grant to be available if somebody was negligent in initial construction, and that's why we put the 10-year window on there. If they follow good practices and are still seeing problems since they're paying into the utility, we wanted to make those funds available to them. And then, just looking through, I'd say the biggest other change that we're recommending is originally, we had the maximum credit at 50%, and our recommendation, or what we're looking at changing it to, is 65%. And this would allow properties to basically max out all the credits available to them, which is the rate reduction, the volume reduction, and the water quality. So properties have the potential to reduce their bill by 65% with that recommendation. And with that, I would be open to any questions.
Director Reese, do we have an estimate of the financial impact that these changes will have to your original projections on the revenue side?
All the recommendations before you today, we walked through, and we feel we had those covered in our initial revenue projection, which this year's about $4 million. When we did that revenue projection, we had a certain number of credits built into it and bad debt, and we feel that all these cover that at this point in time. Some of the other recommendations we received, that's what we're working through, is costing out to see what those would do to the revenue side before we wanted to bring those back.
Okay, thank you. Further questions for Public Works Director, or a motion? This is a receiving file. Councilwoman Akison.
Can I talk? Ask a question? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Reese, I came down to Public Works on Rees Lane and did a tour through the facility and took a look at the rain barrel that you have on display, and we talked about perhaps getting some other choices. And I noticed in the comments, at least one other person is concerned about how they look. Have you been able to do any work on that, or when, what do you kind of envision as far as choices? Because I think that there should be a range of choices for different neighborhoods. I wouldn't want to put the one that's at Public Works up, and I doubt anybody else around this horseshoe would either.
So that's a comment we got, we received in the meetings that we had, the public meetings, and we're trying to work through. Originally, the thought was to work with a big box store and have vouchers that people could get, a $50 coupon to go to one of those stores if they bought an approved city rain barrel that met certain design criteria. We've been having discussions with the Park District also, and how they can help us in the stormwater utility. And so, one of the items that came up was possibly using them as a conduit for these rain barrels. And so I don't have an exact answer yet on what a design will look like, but I could tell you it's something we're trying to come up with, some options or some criteria, so that we get something that fits the need, but then also doesn't distract from people's homes.
It's, anyway, it leaves a lot of room for improvement, I would think. Anyway, okay, good. And you'll keep us up to date as far as, okay, thank you.
I had Councilmember Jensen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering, Director Reese, if the changes that you're going to make, will some of those address the concerns raised by the car dealership and hospitality group? Because there's rather detailed letter and proposed changes, and just going through these quickly that you gave us here tonight, it doesn't look like many of those were addressed.
Yes, that was something, we didn't actually receive all those comments until late last week, and so we're trying to walk through and understand the cost implications of all those. But our next proposal that we would have back would actually, if there's some of those that are valid, we'll be able to take those into account and add them into the manual. Some of them, I could tell you right offhand from staff's recommendation, would not be to accept them. Just, I think one of the initial comments was that they wanted to be exempt from the stormwater utility. And from our standpoint, that kind of puts us in a bad position, because that does not make it a utility at that point in time. Everybody uses a system, everybody pays, just like water, just like sanitary, just like electricity. And so that's the sort of thing that could have a big cost implication, but we'll walk through that so that everybody understands the revenue implications that that would have. And then we're going to take some of the other recommendations they have and see how we can work them into the manual.
Okay, so when you do that, that'll be part of your report to us, either in writing or at the next meeting that we talk about it?
Yes, our intention is to bring that back on the 22nd.
Okay. Additionally, I know you and I have had some communication about some of the proposed changes and concerns that United Presbyterian Church raised, and I believe he spoke to our meeting back in March when we talked about this the last time, and wondered if you could address those at this point?
Yes, so we received some, a request from them for a change, and essentially, that also made them an exempt property from paying the utility. And so we saw that problematic as far as how that would affect everybody else if they were exempted. And part of the rationale that they were using is that they were on the end of the train, I guess, as far as using the stormwater infrastructure. And the problem we see with that is setting up a utility company is, the water company, for example, there's an inherent infrastructure cost for the entire city. You don't pay less just because you're closer to the water tower. There's an infrastructure cost for the entire system that everybody pays, and you all pay the same rate. And that's the same way we're trying to, to make this a legal utility, everybody needs to pay, there has to be a rational nexus where everybody pays a rate based off their usage.
As a follow-up, I understand that rationale, but part of, he proposed a couple other items to, like 10% credit, which wouldn't make them completely exempt. So I wonder what your thoughts are on that. And then also, I think his most recent proposal was a 95% credit, which I guess is basically making them exempt, but I think at some point, he had proposed a 50% credit. So I guess if you can't address that right now, or if you can, please do, or include that in part of your report back, if you would.
We can, we can address each one point by point on the report back. I think originally our intent was that the changes we've made so far, there's ample credits if people are willing to adapt to where the utility is, to where they could get up to 65% credit for their property versus not having to do anything and getting a credit for how they are existing right now.
Okay. I've got one more follow-up, one more question about the material you presented today with regards to the reduction in application fees. Is it, is that, is it just one application fee that you've reduced here? Am I understanding that correctly, from the 40 to the 20?
No, we actually reduced, I believe, six application fees, depending on what it, it depended on what they were applying for, as far as where the fee came from. So the green infrastructure grant and credit reduced from $40 to $20 to apply for the private property drainage assistance program.
Okay.
The application fees, 10.
I got it now.
Do you see them?
So then, this, the application for like the stormwater infrastructure investment grant is being reduced from 1,500 to 500?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just didn't understand that completely. Thank you for that clarification. And thank you, Director Reese, for all your work on this. It's very much appreciated. I'm finished. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Reese, first question, actually kind of embarrassed to ask you a little bit, doesn't come from me. Comes from the homeowner association I was at last night. A lot of people were very concerned and very much involved with what's going on around the horseshoe. First question was about your education, and I know from Bradley, and your experience, basically.
So I attended Bradley University, got a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, and became a licensed professional engineer in 2008.
Great. Thank you very much. Second question, who helps you make these decisions, get all the information together, and try to make a presentation to the council?
Currently, it's primarily, the city has a stormwater engineer, Andrea Klaufenstein. Primarily, almost all this is done by her. She has a civil engineer, one, a recent Bradley grad, that helps her with this. And then also, we have a consultant helping us try to pull it all together with CMT, Crawford Murphy Tilly, which is a local engineering firm.
About the 17.5 backlog that we talked about in the past.
So that, that is...
Opinion, is that 100% of my backlog, or is that list grown every day as time goes by?
My belief is it's growing every day. I think in best-case scenario, that would be 75% of what we know that's out there, and that's just because we haven't had a chance to televise every pipe in town yet and actually know what's underground. A lot of times, we don't know of storm sewer problems until a sinkhole opens up in a street, and then we know what's there and have to go address it. Or we don't know of erosion problems happening in people's backyards until they call us and let us know, just because we don't have staff out inspecting everything all the time.
Other question, can we talk a little bit about the public meetings? We're talking about getting feedbacks. Councilman Jensen talks about that a little bit. Where are the feedback coming from, as she asked? But more important for me is, I still don't understand, I've asked the question four or five times already. We had two public meetings, correct, for this issue?
In the last month, we had two, yes.
And in my understanding, we only have 95 people showing up, correct? I mean, last time I looked, we had 100, we still have about 115,000 voters or people living in the city of Peoria, correct? Tell me your opinion. I mean, what, I mean, it just baffles me that only, I mean, this could be the biggest fee ever since I've been in Peoria the last 30 years, and how come, in my opinion, we're not reaching people?
I don't have a good answer for it, and I think it's something we struggle with even when we do budget meetings and everything, is how to get the citizens more engaged. And I mean, the media has done a good job of picking up on it, advertising it. I know we've met with editorial board and gotten it on the news a number of times, and I just, people seem disengaged, and we just don't have the staff to go door-to-door or to get people, and we've thought about sending out flyers. In fact, we're going to send out sample bills in the next month or so, so that people see what to expect coming forward, hoping that generates feedback. We're gonna, we have a website that's ready to go live here by the end of the week, where it has all the stormwater utility information, it's related to, how it's related to CSO, it has a map on there where people can click their property and see their bill. But honestly, I just don't, we have a marketing firm that we've hired as a subconsultant to CMT, Semantle is a local marketing firm. They've been working with us, trying to get public outreach, and quite honestly, our biggest public outreach I think we had was when we did a pilot project down on Adams Street, and we hosted a thing called City Fest, where we got 1,500 people to come out and actually see what the green infrastructure did. But outside that, and that wasn't a cheap endeavor by any means, and what we're trying to weigh, and this is a conversation we've had with our marketing firm a number of times, is how much do we spend marketing and trying to get public feedback versus using that money to fix the infrastructure that we have and having it... go into hard costs?
I hope you forgive me for the first question, it didn't come from you. I know how much respect I have for you, and you've been a tremendous amount of help for me my first year here in this chair. So thank you very much for answering my questions. I just want to make a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. About six months ago, I was asked to make some decision and vote on this CSO and the budget. And everybody knows around the horseshoe how difficult those decisions are, especially when you have only six months of experience. Six months later, after doing a lot of research and talking to a lot of people, I just want you to know, I'm a little uncomfortable with, in the manner in which we're coming up, you know, coming out with these ideas or these projects here and try to, you know, raise the money to please the EPA. I hope that, that we're all open to maybe, you know, suggestions from our constituent, from our businesses, especially for me in the 5th district. I mean, I see this drain coming towards me in the next 60 days, going to hit me. And it's very important that we keep listening to people that might have great ideas how we can solve this problem. Thank you very much for your time.
I had Councilmember Grab next.
We've been having water issues for many decades in this community. And a lot of these issues are very much, very serious issues in the 4th district and the 5th district. We're not just talking 1, 2, and 3. I know, I've seen people lose their yards. We've seen all kinds of things, have we not, Director Reese, through the years? With people asking for city help and rectifying some of the flooding they have into their basements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But we've been kicking the can down the road now for a few decades. And now, finally, we're sitting in the chairs when a decision must be made. We're going to be compelled to make a decision as it relates to the lawsuit, which has been hanging out there since, I believe, the mid-'80s. I think I'm probably the luckiest councilman in the world, because in my district, we have a church. You know which church I'm going to mention. They got way ahead of the curve. And they put in, as you know, Councilor Euler, a permeable parking lot, a very large one, a considerable investment. Those folks there were visionary. Fire department went over there and they were flooding it with water from the aerial The water just stayed right there. At some point, I think certainly the people in my district and I believe all over the city, they know that we need to be better stewards of our environment. They just want this to be done fairly. And I believe our Bradley graduate is leading a fine team in doing this as fairly as is possible. We're not going to probably have, and maybe it's not desirable, to have a repeal of the mandate coming from the EPA, in spite of everything you're hearing about what's going on in Washington, DC right now with the EPA leadership. We are going to have to settle that lawsuit sooner or later. King's cheese is made of the people's milk. Our people will have to pay. We have been valiantly struggling to ensure that what they pay is fair. These storm credit manuals are embodiments of the same struggle, to ensure that what the people are being asked to pay is fair. And that's why we've been having public input on it. And why we continue to have input. And I wouldn't put a whole lot of stock in these formalized meetings we have. I'll tell you why. A lot of the feedback I get comes in the form of my emails or phone calls. I can go to some public meetings, and it's a relative handful of the total population. I guarantee you, I've gotten more emails and calls and comments about this, going to neighborhood meetings, than these structured public presentations. Not that we shouldn't have these. But there are more ways than just that of getting feedback from the public engaging how this should be done and how it can be done very, very fairly. And now to something a little less weighty than what we were talking about. I think Councilwoman Acason is quite correct. You know, there's been some reports that Peoria will end up being Rain Barrel City in the United States of America. Or one of them. And we're all concerned that they look optically pleasing. And maybe, since I strongly believe in the ham formula, the way Peoria goes forward in the most successful manner possible. I was discussing this with another counselor this morning, and she said, "What's the ham formula?" The future of Peoria is history, arts, and medicine, in my opinion. Those are the three things we really need to capitalize on. Why not involve our creative class, perhaps the children in the schools, to come up with a beautifully designed rain barrel? And get public engagement that way, so this isn't just viewed as being a punishment. This is something we're doing to make our city better, keep our river clean, and to do it as fairly as possible, and ultimately meet a government mandate which is coming. So I think that's worth some thought. Certainly, in many parts of the city, I know downtown, Denise Moore has enjoyed the work of the creative class, wonderful sculpture walk down there. We're doing more and more murals on West Main. Let's involve, you know, the public on this. I think that can, you know, encourage, if we really want to cultivate public interest in this, this will get a buzz going that maybe we haven't had so far, Councilman Seer. And so it's just a suggestion, but I commend you on your work. And anybody who's listening should know, Mayor, that this council has done everything possible to cushion the impact of some of these decisions that have been kicked down the road for decades on the pocketbook of the people of Peoria. We have worked very hard, for example, with the EPA, I'm looking at our corporation council and our staff, driving up to Chicago, our manager, trying to get something coherent. And not having our people be literally jabbed with a repayment schedule that is completely unrealistic for the median income of the people in this community. We've been fighting hard. And we haven't told the people this story the way we should. These negotiations have been protracted. One of your predecessors, Manager Eric, said to me, "Hey, the real thing you need to be worried about, councilman, is not all this stuff that appears on the agenda, it's that lawsuit out there involving the feds." And that's been three city managers ago. So, thank you for the presentation. Keep up the good work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Further discussion on this item, or this is a receiving file motion? Councilwoman, motion? Thank you. Motion to receive and file by Councilmember Acason and seconded by Councilmember Turner. If there's no further discussion, I'm seeing no more lights. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We're at unfinished business. 18-106 is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to concur with a recommendation from the planning and zoning commission and staff to adopt an ordinance rezoning property from a Class R4, single-family residential, to a Class I2 railroad warehouse industrial for the property located at 1824 Northeast Monroe Street.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this item from the last agenda in order to take some time to visit with the property owner, Mr. Wetzel and his lovely wife, to talk about what their plans were for the item that we're, that we're addressing tonight. And I'd like to, I'm very happy to report that they continue to be stalwarts of the community, very involved with what's happening in that area, and I'd like to move for approval.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Acason. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
18-108 is a request to concur with the recommendation of the planning and zoning commission to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R3, single-family residential district for outdoor recreation practice fields for property located at 2607 West Willinow's Road, North Villa Lake Drive, and 7519 North Allen Road. And on yellow is a replacement attachment A, and that it replaces pages 1 through 3 of the five-page attachment. So if you have any more questions, I'm sure someone could answer.
Thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve the recommendation with the amended site plan permitting a maximum of 116 parking spaces.
The motion is seconded by Councilmember Turner. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
18-118 is a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Peoria Housing Authority for the Peoria Green Splash Project. And I'll call your attention to a replacement agreement on yellow.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move for approval with comments on the other side.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. I'm very happy to bring this to the 1st district, particularly to the south side, and more specifically to the Harrison Homes area. This is a splash, a green splash pad project. And I don't see a picture attached here. I think we had a picture before. But what this is going to provide to the residents of the Harrison Homes area, specifically the children, is an opportunity to, on days like today, when this is completed, that they too can run through water right there in their own neighborhood. This was a grant that was awarded to, specifically to the 61605 zip code by Illinois American Water, because they understand the need for all children across our city to have advantages like this. So I want to thank Illinois American Water for doing this and providing this grant. And also particularly, a special thanks to the Peoria Housing Authority for allowing this to be on their property, so that the children, most of the kids in that area are in the Harrison Homes area where this pad is going to be. So I want to thank the Peoria Housing Authority for taking on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing no lights, we have a motion in the second to approve. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
If there's no further unfinished business?
Do we have any unfinished business, unfinished? Okay, seeing none?
We would be at new business?
New business to come before the council this evening? Any new business? Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just based on the action that the Peoria Public School Board took, I think, two meetings ago, with regards to their request to have the city expire the north side riverfront TIF and redistribute the money to them. I was wondering, I would like to get a report back, an accounting on all of the TIFs that we have. I'd like to know how much money we have in each of the TIFs, how much time is left in each of the TIFs. So a detailed report on that in the next few weeks, I think, would be helpful to see then, you know, if the city's going to take any action or respond to the school district's resolution.
We'll be happy to give you a detailed accounting of the TIFs. And we've started to put that information together. So we'll have it for you in two weeks.
Just as a follow-up, with regards to that specific TIF, you know, according to their resolution, and my understanding is that that will expire at the end of this year. Is that right?
That TIF will, that's the, let me see, Director Scroggert's here, that would be the, I believe that's the PMP TIF. It's not the O'Brien Steel TIF, which is, there's, one's the north side TIF, one's the north side riverfront park TIF, so...
Right.
Yeah. We'll get, we'll get the clarity on all of that and give you a report back on all of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other new business tonight? Councilman Grab?
Mr. Manager, in the interest of furthering openness in government, and I've forsworn the use of the word transparency because it's used so much, I don't want translucency either, but in the spirit of being very open with the public, would you be able to prepare a report back about what has happened historically with our engagement with the EPA on settling the lawsuit, from the time it began, right up to the present? And gosh knows where we'll be, what, two weeks from now with them? There could be developments. I think our public deserves to know what we've been doing and how hard you have been working, your administration, to ensure that the public takes the smallest financial hit possible. And, you know, we had, you know, a reversal a while back with our dominant employer not building a headquarters here, and arguments were made that, you know, we should still pay a certain amount. I think the public needs to know what we've been doing, because it seems like only the council knows this. Now, I know some of this is, of course, litigation, involves litigation. And we have a right to have closed sessions as it relates to litigation and strategy and so on and so forth. But I think they should know about all the efforts back and forth, where we are, right up to the minute for this next report, because I just don't think our staff, and even this council is given the credit that it deserves for, trying to minimize the impact on our business people, their pocketbooks, as well as our citizens, if that's possible.
We'll be happy to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further new business? New business? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
We're at citizens' opportunity to address a city council.
Citizens to address? We need name, please, for the record, and five-minute speaking limit. Up first is Mary Hayes.
My name's Mary Hayes, and I live at 2915 West Ann Street. And I want to give you a little update about what I've been up to in the last few weeks. It seems as though yesterday, I became a deputy registrar, which means that I can register anybody to vote in the whole state of Illinois. Now, how I got to be a deputy registrar is I have been an election judge for 20 years. I have preceded over three special elections. I have even been on an election with Jesse Jackson. And I have the qualifications to register, register voters in the state of Illinois. Now, we are going to go, we are going to hit the ground running. We are going to work really hard to clean up Peoria. We're going to work on grocery stores, and we're going to work on sidewalks, and we're going to work on the riverfront apartments, and we're going to work on a lot of other issues. And we're going to need a lot of help with... we're going to need a lot of help with that. And I would suggest that you get on my bandwagon, because we are really serious about making an effort to clean up Peoria. And we're going to start right here in this room, in this city council. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for your efforts. Zach, thank you for your candy. And how about those Huntsville Havics? Bye.
Up next, we have Mr. Seera.
Sabino Seera, 1708 South Stanley, in the South Side. I've been away a little while. In fact, I even came late tonight. Sorry about that. But I just like to talk about my district, the 1st district. There's parts of it that's really rundown. They allow vehicles to park over the sidewalks. They park vehicles on the properties that were supposed to be. If you wanted to park a vehicle on a property, you were supposed to put gravel in that down. They don't, a lot of them don't do that anymore. It's getting to be really a ghetto, you know? It's nothing to be proud of. And we should patrol that better and put the law down. So, because you let one person do that, there're going to be other persons, you know? You go down there, and you see a lot of tow-in trucks parked in the street, you know? Sometimes, one won't move for a few days. And also, some of the traffic, they go past pretty fast, you know, in the residential districts. I think we ought to cut the speed limit down, and put some of those little humps in the street like Moss Avenue has, you know? I don't know what they got that we don't have, the need. And I, it's just getting to be bad, you know, that we don't live by the rules what it's going to, what's supposed to be happening. And I'd like to see it come back to the old glory that it used to be in the old days, you know? People think they're really smart, and they're doing the right thing, you know? You talk about, they've been this long, that long. They should be as long as I've been. And before I die, I want to see a lot of more improvement down there in my part of town. Because when I moved down there in 1959, it was really peaceful. And you could walk the streets late at night and everything else. You don't, you can't do that too much anymore. So, I'm asking that we patrol, we patrol that a little better. And with that, I'm going to leave you. So I say goodnight.
Thank you, Mr. Seera. Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we would be at adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Seeing no discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank H. Wayne Wilson, his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22. And this meeting is adjourned.